Call meeting to order. Your call please.
Ms. Spears, here. Mr. Bennet. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Tossick.
Here.
Reverend Custer.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Ms. Luthgo.
Here.
Mr. Staborowski.
Here.
Mr. Valeski.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, resolve that Penncrest Board of School vectors approve the following minutes as listed.
No move. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Very done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
School is over for the year. I'm not sure if we have any student representatives from the three buildings here to speak. I don't believe I see them, so we will move on to the PAA representative address. Ms. Miller.
Good evening, members of the board, community, students of Penncrest, and welcome to Mr. Ford. My name is Debbie Miller, lifelong resident of Cambridge Springs and proud representative of Penncrest educators. While I am a taxpayer, parent, and community advocate, I come here tonight as a teacher and a dismayed one. I know I'm not alone in feeling incredibly frustrated by the way some of the board members have dismissed the concerns and perspective of our teachers and parents who came here last week to tell you that we must continue to invest in our students, to invest in the public education we provide so that students can have fulfilling lives. Why is that? Why does it seem okay with some of you to dismiss all of these people as some sort of special interest group whose voices aren't legitimate? You may say, "Well, that's because you teachers and parents have a vested interest in increasing funding to our schools." And you know what? You're right. My colleagues and I do have a vested interest. We want to do our best so that our students can be their best. And we need proper staffing and resources to do so. Our district parents who came to tell you directly how your proposed cuts would affect their children, they too have a vested interest. They want to know that they are providing the best opportunity for the most precious people in their lives, their children. Mr. Valeski's statement to the Tribune was especially offensive when he dismissed the voices of parents and teachers saying, "Nobody else is concerned." Well, they should be concerned because without strong public schools, you won't have stable and increasing property values. Without strong public schools, the population shrinks. Young families looking to put down roots will look elsewhere. And those who grew up here, like myself, will look to greener pastures. What might be the most frustrating of all, and believe me, there's kind of a long list of frustrations to pick from, such as members who negotiated and voted to accept our contract and yet refused to fund it properly. But, like I said, most frustrating is that this board has once again thrown the community into upheaval over, let me check my notes here, a four mil increase that would be less than six dollars a month for the median homeowner when they utilize the homestead exclusion. And what is worse of all is that you were fully aware of this fact when you were stoking fears of a funding crisis on May 23rd. We know that you were aware, thanks to a Right to Know Act request that revealed our business manager explicitly reminding you of the homestead exclusion in the May 3rd email. It is bearing false witness to pretend to be unaware of something you know to be true. But to those of you who are here to make our schools stronger, our teachers, our parents, and most importantly, our students appreciate you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is registered citizens' comments. Just a reminder that board policy allows for 30 minutes of public comment prior to the agenda. Each individual registered speaker has a maximum of five minutes. We currently have 19, 20 people registered. So again, as you have to speak, if you can make your statements concise to get your point across, more people will be able to speak. Up first is Mr. Matt Wilcox.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Matt Wilcox, and I currently live at East Mead Township. Both my wife and I were born and raised in this area. We went to school in Maplewood. From K to 12. I have this long speech here tonight that affects my children and the children of this community that I care about so much. We currently have three children that currently attend school in the district, and we have another in the future. About eight to 10 years ago, I used to speak regularly at these meetings, but then I stopped. I sort of threw in the towel, and life started to get busy for us. But here I am again, giving this district one last fight before I really start considering other options for my family. There's a saying, "When you know better, you do better." And the longer this circus of a board continues, the more I learn about other places and the opportunities that are available for my family. So I might just need to do better for my kids and their educational options. Funny thing is, I'm here to speak about raising taxes, but you know I had to pay for a babysitter tonight just so I could come and talk at this meeting. So not only am I here to ask you to make the right decision for the betterment of my children's education by raising taxes, I'm also paying someone to watch my kids because we have a board majority that is incapable of making decisions that are in the best interest of the kids attending our public schools in this community. We should be able to trust that the board has the students' best interest in mind, plus that money that I am now paying to have a babysitter would already pay for a chunk of the tax increase for my household. The definition of proactive is creating or controlling a situation by causing something to happen rather than responding to it after it has happened. Penncrest is far from proactive. This board is constantly reacting instead of being proactive, and it's a shame. Start doing some one, three, five, and 10-year planning rather than each year reacting in a way that is, "We will not raise taxes, cut this or cut that." As a parent of four young children in the district, I have an unpopular opinion that many in the district, a difference of opinion than many in the district, and that's okay. I can see the writing on the wall with the decreases in class sizes of those attending school within our district. All of my children are currently in classes of 50 or less students in their grade. We will not sustain what we have now if we don't start getting creative. A large part of the decrease is due to poor decision-making at the school board level. Many families have left and will continue to leave due to the constant chaos many of you create. As a parent and taxpayer, I would like to see some things combined, especially in regards to athletics, to make sure academics stay a priority. I am by no means saying close buildings and eliminate programs right now, but some really tough decisions are going to have to be made in the future. I don't want to see anybody losing their job, and I don't want to see opportunities lost for our students. I feel if you start doing some long-term planning with stakeholders, you could find ways to save money but also make sure we are helping other students to have the best educational opportunities possible. But yet again, that would mean you'd need to be proactive instead of reactive. You can't continue to be unproductive and pass time away in the next budget season and say, "Oh, well, we have this huge deficit, and we're going to have to cut all these things." Start working with groups. If you think you need to combine programs in the future, we'd like to have this sport, say in 2027 or 2028, we'd like to have this sport start being a district-wide option. Then you would have time to work with feeder programs and start having kids participate in those activities at a younger age. You cannot on a whim just decide to cut things or combine things. You need to work with the district administration and coaches to make sure you are following appropriate timelines so that postseason opportunities aren't jeopardized for students. Same thing with academics. Find ways to utilize the talent and knowledge you have in the best ways possible. Students at Penncrest should have equal academic and extracurricular activities, and sadly, that does not seem to be the path we are headed with, with what we are offered when cuts continue to happen. Mr. Ford, welcome to the district. We are hopeful that you are able to handle this school board and keep the students and their families at the forefront of your decision-making. Many of us are worried that you are already being set up by the board majority to fail. Hopefully, that is not the case, and the board will prove us wrong. As a district, we are three distinct and different communities with one larger community within one larger community. And as you can see, although each attendance area will have their own thoughts, we are able to rally together as one joint community to fight for what is right. This district doesn't need a politician-like leader. We need someone who is committed to rebuilding our once prestigious school district and making it appealing again. Thank you.
Good evening to the board of directors, and welcome Mr. Ford to Penncrest School District. I have debated over what I was going to say tonight. Ultimately, I decided on some facts that may not have been mentioned or discussed previously. According to the most recent American Community Survey by the Census Bureau released earlier this year, it was a five-year survey from 2018 to 2022. 60% of Penncrest residents are a part of the workforce, ages 18 to 64. The remaining residents were split pretty evenly between those who are under 18 at 20% and those who are 65 and older or retired at 20%. 85% of housing units in the district are owner-occupied. Now, according to the National Center for Educational Statistics, based on the same survey, 78.3% of families in the district own the homes they live in. I'm a person who fits into all these statistics. I am a part of the workforce, I own a home, and I have children who attend public school. Since the budget has come out, the majority of people I have heard talking about taxes have encouraged a tax increase of some kind, from finance committees to work sessions to the voting meetings. I am, I believe, like the majority of people in our district. None of us want our taxes raised, but we understand the necessity. We understand these schools are the heart and soul of our community. We are not the largest district by area. Warren County School District, for example, spans 788 square miles and is only the second-largest in the state by geography. According to USA.com, Penncrest ranks number eight in Pennsylvania by square miles. The 10 largest districts should be communicating with each other. Collaborative efforts are more often effective and can be successful in overcoming the unique challenges they all share, large areas, mostly rural communities, with dwindling populations and school enrollments. I urge you to be the leaders for this. It would be more than likely worth our while, and we would benefit from it. I urge you to be leaders in other ways. Be bold and creative with the land we own as a district. Think outside the box and make it not only capable of creating revenue, but sustainable revenue year after year. Utilize your solicitor to ensure the district is getting the best deals possible. I agree with what Jordan said a month or so ago about needing to see things sooner and having a voice in these contracts that you guys are discussing. I have one final number for you, five. Five is a majority of this board, not in terms of Republican or Democrat, left or right, and not conservative or progressive. Five is the number of new members of this board with no experience, as far as I am aware, as serving as a public official. You were all called to this. You were called to serve and ran to be in the position that you're in. You all have different ideas and ideals of how things should be done, but you all ran on the same principle in that our students are the most important and that our community needs to thrive. I urge that those five vote for the four mil tax increase. Give our new superintendent what he needs now to be successful and work as hard as you can in the upcoming year so that our district has what it needs without raising taxes anymore and without making cuts. Before we're thinking, be daring. I also ask all of you to take a picture. I took this picture today with my kids. This is going to the state legislators. Take a picture today, holding this. Send a message to our state legislators. Although I am aware this district gets 60% of its funding from the state and that it should be evened out a little bit, I am also aware that the base amount the state gives to every school district is not adequate and is probably not appropriate anymore. This community will rally behind you if you lead us. I will stay after the meeting to take pictures for whoever wants to get involved. And tomorrow, I will be at different locations in our community, hoping that people in our community will send this message to state legislators like I did today. I want to be part of the solution. I don't want to be up here complaining. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cameron Halaquel, and I'm going to be a junior at Segu Town Junior Senior High School in the fall. Over 6 million kids across the country participated in high school sports last year, and that number is predicted to increase over these next few years. There are multiple benefits that kids gain from participating in sports and similar extracurriculars besides overall fitness. Kids participating in high school sports often have higher grades. They gain leadership skills, develop greater social skills, learn how to work with a team, how to manage time, self-discipline, how to set goals, and other valuable skills. Another thing I would like to highlight in the speech is the importance of electives. Electives allow kids to branch out from the four core subjects. Electives make kids more excited to learn. Many kids who do not often engage when learning in core classes show interest in learning in their elective classes. These classes make kids more excited to learn as a whole. In fact, colleges often look at what elective students took in high school because it shows your willingness to try new things as well as your general interests according to college board. High school sports and elective classes extend learning outside of the classroom and into life. They create well-rounded students as well. One thing I have realized while attending SHS is the sense of community that Segu Town and all of the other Penncrest schools have created. Whether it is at fundraising, sports games, or other school events, the community that Penncrest has built is undeniable. Today, I'm asking that when you vote, you keep that community in mind. You keep those teachers in mind, you keep those kids in mind, you keep students like me in mind. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Fonzo, and I live in Steuma Township. I am not the principal, just in case there is any confusion. I am here tonight as a parent to support my four children who will be in seventh, fifth, second, and kindergarten next year. I would like to bring to your attention two concerns I have. To start off tonight by sharing with you the importance of having librarians in our school district. I am encouraged by what I heard last week at the work session regarding your commitment to keeping our librarians. However, I also understand the reality that next year, we might be back here having the same discussion all over again. I'm going to read you a letter from Leah Lindeman, Courtney Pentland, and Emily Drobinski about the importance of librarians in schools. Dear Mr. Ford and board members, as presidents of the Pennsylvania School Librarians Association, American Association of School Librarians, and the American Library Association, we understand the economic uncertainties all schools are facing. However, when school district decision-makers choose to eliminate school librarian positions in a district, they deprive students of opportunities to learn, threaten academic and reading achievement, and perpetuate educational inequalities. Decades of research suggest that reading and writing test scores, as well as graduation rates, improve when schools employ certified school librarians. A 2022 Rutgers University study found that college freshmen with high school research experience, particularly those from schools with certified librarians, perform better in using academic research tools and demonstrating digital literacy. School librarians also support students' readiness for career paths, trade schools, and branches of the military. In 2012, Pennsylvania's study further verified that at-risk learners, those who are economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, Black, and those with IEPs, benefit proportionately in schools with a school library program staffed by a certified school librarian. For more research, please read "Why School Librarians Matter," a 2018 Phi Delta Capin article. School librarians engage students in the lifelong habit of reading for enjoyment as well as education. They also teach critical information literacy and digital citizenship skills. For example, librarians teach students how to be discerning consumers of news media and how to avoid fake news sources. These essential lifelong learning skills are critical in an era of proliferating media outlets and artificial intelligence. Certified school librarians are the only teaching professionals in your school who engage with every student and work collaboratively with every teacher to deliver quality, personalized instruction. An effective library program under the leadership of a certified school librarian is the only classroom used by the entire school community. Certified school librarians are skilled in developing and managing library collections that include both print and digital resources, as well as teaching students how to access these resources. The elimination of certified teacher librarians is counterproductive to ensuring successful readers and lifelong learners who meet annual academic achievement targets. We hope that you will review the research and carefully consider the value of providing your students with a school library program staffed by a certified school librarian. If you would like more information, please contact us. Thank you for considering this information and making the best decision for your students. This letter mentions how important all of our librarians are and how they make a difference in our schools. 22 PA Code 31.41 mandates librarians in juvenile facilities and adult prisons based on court orders. This means that prisons are required to have a certified librarian. Public schools are not. Can we please provide for our children more than what is required for a prisoner? I would also like to address the excessive number of students in some classrooms. My daughter was in fourth grade this year, and there were 28 students in her room. A classroom that size comes with many challenges for both the students and their teachers. Students experience limited individualized attention and support, which will adversely affect their school experiences. In closing, I would like to encourage and invite Mr. Ford and the school board members to visit one of these larger classrooms, not to evaluate but to observe, not to criticize but to encourage. Please come sit in a classroom filled with 28 students for a day in order to experience all the interactions that come with a highly populated classroom. By sitting in the classroom, you'll be able to place yourself in the shoes of the students and teachers. You will be able to experience firsthand how a large class size impacts the students' learning and progress along with the extra daily challenges faced by the teachers. Thank you for your time.
Say it again.
Jester Taugh. Jester Taugh, lifelong resident of Caswaga Township, graduate of Cambridge Springs High School, former member of the school board. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight. Have a lot of things to say that were said the last time. I'm not going to repeat them, but I have some other things that I think are important. But we talked about cost. Let's take a look at some of the costs that we've incurred since 2012. Average price of gas, April 2012, was $3.28 a gallon. April of this year, $3.78. Average price of chicken, at the same timeframe, was $1.95, I'm sorry, $1.40, $1.95 today. The average price of eggs, $1.83 a dozen. Today, $2.86. The average price of ground chuck, $3.33 a pound. Today, $5.28 a pound. Price of fresh whole milk, $3.47 a gallon. Today, $3.87. The average price of tomatoes, $1.39. Today, $1.96. The price of electricity, $1 kilowatt per hour, $1 kilowatt hour, $13.00. Today, $17.00. The last session, I kind of took offense to one of the comments that was made on the work session saying that these fine people in the audience didn't really matter because they're just such a small part. Yes, we are a small part of the representation of the district. Granted, the number and the attendance of the audience was small. However, from a small acorn, a mighty oak grows. One person can make a difference. Let me just list a few people that have made a difference. Mr. Hazelwood. You probably wouldn't know him if you weren't in the district 50 years ago, but he was our football coach. Very good teacher. Mr. Neil Leslie, just passed away. One of the best teachers I've had. Dr. Clifford Porter, my Bo Agit. Another very good teacher. Mrs. Zoraski, retired a few years ago. Another very good teacher. Ms. Eller took her place. Another very good teacher. Abraham Lincoln. I think we all know what he did. He turned this country around. Adolf Hitler. Yeah, look what he did. Something enough to be proud of. General Eisenhower. He liberated the people who were in concentration camps. Dr. Martin Luther King. I think we know who he is. Nelson Mandela. Oprah Winfrey. Moses. Queen Esther. If it wasn't for Queen Esther, there might have been another Auschwitz. Let's not forget the person who had the biggest impact over the lives of thousands of centuries, thousands over centuries, Jesus. We all have choices to make. We can make good or bad choices. Are we here to make sure that our children get the best education possible? Are we here to grind an ax? As someone really, who's really struggled at school, I know and understand what these children go through. I'm not saying that it can't be done. It can be done with lots of hard work, lots of support, and lots of determination. I went to college late in life, and at that time that I went to college, my late wife and I had four children. I graduated in three years with a four-year degree. I'm not saying that to brag. I'm just saying it because I did what had to be done. I found out in my senior year that I had a learning disability. We have a decision to make. We need a four-million increase minimum.
Thank you in advance for this opportunity to speak to all of you. I worked for Penn Crest School District from 1994 to 2012 as the health coordinator for the Head Start and later for pre-K programs. Head Start is a preschool program for low-income families funded with federal dollars. The greatest lesson I learned while working for families in poverty is that all parents love their children, and they want the best for them, just like everyone else. My husband was in the first graduating class from the New Sagertown High School in 1972, and our two children graduated from Cambridge Springs High School in 2004 and 2006. We are retired and live on a fixed income and are willing to pay an increase in our school taxes for the benefit of the children in this district. Look around you. These aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet. These are our children, the doctors, teachers, caregivers, and innovators who will shape our tomorrow. Don't they deserve smaller class sizes, teachers who truly know, actually know them and a chance, and give them a chance to reach their full potential? I remember the year our daughter was inducted into the National Honor Society. There were more kids inducted into the National Honor Society that year from the former Casawago Elementary School. That speaks volumes for the class sizes and the increased teacher-to-student ratio. Mr. Valeski is quoted as saying that cutting athletics may not be palatable. However, the board was proposing drastic cuts affecting education. Now that is not palatable. I agree that athletics are important. Our daughter played three sports, our son played soccer, and managed the girls' basketball and volleyball teams. But education is the foundation, the springboard to their dreams. And personally, I was offended when Mr. Custard stated at the work meeting that all the emails that he received were cut and pasted, and the people attending these meetings were recruited by Mr. Brown and Mr. Brooks. I've never met you, Mr. Brooks.
I've missed you.
That is just not-- [laughter] This is just not true. In my case, and probably many others, I was shocked by the proposed budget cuts when I read them in the newspaper. That information alone made me attend last week's meeting and take this time to voice my opinion. And as to the $4-point million increases over the next four years due to the teachers' union contract, going forward when hiring new teachers, and you have two teachers that are equally qualified, why not give preference to the teacher that lives in our district? That way, they are part of the tax base and would have a stake in the district where they live. Something to think over. Mental health is so very important, especially now with the increased violence we hear on the news almost nightly. We are still experiencing the long-term effects from COVID, so I strongly suggest and encourage the board to fund the mental health professional on staff. This community is not rich, that's true, but we have something you just can't find everywhere. We have grit. We stand together in the hard times, and we fight for our kids. Without them, there is no us. Let's show them that we value their education, their potential, their very future. Invest in them. Invest in what matters most. Please take some time to decide if the children in this district are worth an additional $10 a month with a four-mill increase. Be careful with your decisions. They are watching and listening to you.
Jeff Gable, Hayfield Township.
Thank you for your time. I'm Jeff Gable from Hayfield Township. To the board, I recently read over the policy manual. You are to see to our kids to get an education. You are to levy taxes to do that. So if it takes a tax increase to pay for the courses that you must raise taxes for, then you do it. And I looked through your 0011 and all that, and those who want a zero tax increase, you don't fit Penn Crest policy because that's not what Penn Crest is about or education is about. You have to continue. You have to have courses. You can't be cutting courses. That's cutting the education. Things to remember, why taxes need to be raised, student education, cost of supplies, gas, electric, every expense that goes up every year, and mandates added by the state. The worst thing to hear, but they come. The board last week began acting like a problem-solving board when you began to talk amongst with each other up here, seeing across from each other. And that's what you need to do. That's how you solve the problems. That's how you know what each other's thinking and what your opinion is because that's how you work together. That's how you work things out. And I totally lost my spot. Anyway, the big thing is to work together so you can solve the problem. Last week, seven of you did the speaking, two of you did not. We need to hear from the other two so everybody can hear because what you talk about needs to happen in this room, not out of here somewhere, not emails, not none of that. So you know and hear, this is where you're making the decision. The state has already taxed our education money, and without raising taxes, we will not get our share of the money. Because remember, the state reimburses us more back from the state when we raise the taxes here. It's unfair, but that's the way they work. And as I looked over everything, what the board's supposed to be doing and what they're looking at by cutting some of the teachers and not replacing them, they are cutting courses, they are doing away with the education, and they need to put some of that back on there. I am in favor of the four mills. I think you're going to have to do it this year. Because for us, the community now, we also have to be part of that. We need to be talking to our state reps so they treat our kids equally, which they do not right now, and sending money back to our school district. The state Supreme Court has told them that Congress, they must fix the way they do the education system, and so the money is sent back to the district and they treat kids equally. Right now, the state representatives just passed a bill for $728 for the next five years to come into our education system. It now goes to the Senate part of the representative. Everybody in this room needs to get a hold of Michelle Brown--
Brooke.
Brooke. Thank you. Sorry. Tell them that they have to. This is not about politics. This is about educating our kids. This has nothing to do with politics. It doesn't belong in the school system. Politics do not belong on the board. Remember, education is for our kids and for the future. And the only other thing I have is last week, it was brought up about outside help, using outside help and not having an inside person. In my past experience with business and hiring outside help, outside help usually costs two to three times more than having in-house. Number one, you have the valuable insight of they know the people, they know the students, they know how your system works.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have thirty minutes. A lot of fore and school policy shall move on to the education board. Yes, sir. Thank you.
We gonna let all the speakers speak anyhow?
Yes.
We've done that before. We have done that before.
I'm fine for just discussion, but I'm fine with doing all public comments now before we vote, being that it is on the tax increase, but whatever the president decides is fine.
I agree with Mr. Valeski. I'd say let's just let all of them go. So when we get done--
I'm fine with it.
Yes, please.
Great.
Hello. My name is Abby Gatz, a resident of Casawago Township, and I'm a 2021 mid-COVID pandemic Cambridge Springs graduate. This upcoming--
Can I just interrupt you?
Yeah.
I just got on from the Zoom. The solicitor says we need to have a motion on that and vote on that to-- to-- to--
I'd like to make a motion that we let all the speakers speak. Second.
Hold the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Post is carried.
Your time is short. Now.
As I'm saying, this upcoming fall semester, I will be entering my senior year at Fredonia State and completing my undergraduate in business administration and marketing. I'm here to speak today because I care so much about this district and the school that gave me the necessary tools in order to succeed in life after high school. I was a kid whose home life was not very consistent or stable. School was my safe place. I knew that once I got to school, I had a lot of amazing teachers who genuinely cared about me beyond just my academics, and I have to give so much credit to each and every one of them for shaping me into the young woman speaking here before you today. The teachers that we have in our school district bring value to our district. They create engaging lessons in an ever-changing environment. They take the time to know and understand each of their students, and they put so much of their own time, money, and energy into these schools, and I believe that their job is absolutely priceless. After learning and listening to a lot of what has been going on with this board, it appears to me that you are looking at this through a business lens. As a business student myself, I'd like to explore this idea in the terms that I have learned and my place of higher education, which contrary to some of our board members' beliefs, is not a place of indoctrination but a place of higher learning. First and foremost, when researching and gathering data to evaluate or consult with a business, we often reach out to the experts. We listen to their recommendations, experiences, and concerns. In this situation, it is clear to me that your teachers are your experts. They know firsthand the trials and tribulations our school is facing. They may have keen insights on what resources we are lacking or what resources are not being utilized. On top of all of that, most of these teachers have their master's degree, making them the most qualified experts on the education being received in our schools. It is so tiresome hearing over and over that these teachers do not deserve an equivalent amount of respect, gratitude, and say, as doctors, business leaders, and engineers have in their own fields. Moving on, I have heard the term sustainability being used in regards as to why we have to make these cuts. The definition of sustainable is able to be maintained, upheld, or defended. When we talk about sustainability in our classes, we talk about how the business will be able to implement practices so that there is longevity. I would like to ask the board, how these budget cuts promote sustainability? In order to be sustainable, that would require a plan and action beyond just these cuts. Without one, we will be having the same conversation in every year to come. How can we guarantee that making these cuts now puts us in a better place moving forward? There will still be a deficit, there will have less resources, and significantly less value. Now, value is a key term that we also use when talking about businesses. Where do we already have value, and where can we add more? These are key questions that we must ask when talking about our school district. If you look at our recent positive press for our district within the last few years, you will find numerous examples of our incredible teachers and staff and the work that they are doing for our schools. You will find multiple regional, district, and state accomplishments from our athletics, chorus, bands, and extracurriculars. This is where our pre-existing value lies, within our district. This is what increases our customer base. Unfortunately, we have had a lot of negative press in our district within the last few years, some of which traveling all of the way to the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court. That press is not coming from our teachers, students, staff, or extracurriculars. To be quite frank, it's coming from those of you sitting before me today. You have caused a loss of value in our district. You have made us lose value for customers at a 22% rate. If I was your boss, I would have fired you. If you want to structure this like a business, then as a voter and a taxpayer, I am your shareholder. You're an elected public servant with a duty to take care of our schools and properly manage this business. So please, do what's right for the kids. Your intentions are increasingly more transparent every time a student or community member comes up here and voices their concern, and there's a handful of you who choose to do absolutely nothing for them. Thank you, and please, do the four million tax increase.
This time last year, State Rep. Rowe made an announcement about introducing legislation to prohibit city board members from voting on teacher contracts if they had, you know, a spouse or, you know, somebody tied to that, you know, contract. To my knowledge, the one lone individual on our board, Mr. Brown, has always abstained from voting on that. Fast forward now, a couple of weeks, about a week ago, same state legislature, Rowe, put out some numbers, very disingenuous, very-- I know four members of the board currently, Bennick, Chossey, Valeski, and Custard sought his approval to run, him, Rep. Vanetta. And so the number he put out is he said $24,000 for the price of educating the Penn Crest students. So I went straight to the source, I got the information, went straight to the business manager, and the current cost to teach an elementary school student in the Penn Crest district is $13,086.58. Secondary is $15,066.65. I asked him where he got that number. He's yet to reply. Our district is funded three ways. I asked the business director to tell-- pretend like I'm in fifth grade and tell me how it's funded. 61% of the funding is from the state, 36% local, 3% federal. It would be absolute malfeasance not to position the district in order to educate our children. We've already heard that the state, there's money out there that we've already paid taxes on if we just raised four mill. Four mill. If we just raised four mil, four mil, it's six to 10 bucks a month per household. You know, and I'm sorry, I'm not here to step on toes, but we're hearing a lot of feedback. People don't want the taxes raised, people are on fixed incomes. I'm a Gen Xer, okay? Latchkey kid, fend for myself. I have a question for the booms. In all due respect, who paid to have your children educated? Who put their taxes in to pay for your children? I understand that the baby boomers are the fastest-growing retirees ever before, okay? I understand fixed incomes, all right? But it's our duty as citizens to pay it forward to the future generations, okay? And I don't know, I've already heard two individuals, and I'm gonna assume that are baby boomers, already say they're willing to pay the extra increase, okay? Because reality is, we will be here next year. We'll be here the year after that because of a lack of leadership of the majority of this board. It was evident last year, and it's evident this year. Do your job, okay? Do your job that you were elected for, that the policies that are on the district books require you to do. I've got two vested interests in it. Do I want my taxes to go up? Absolutely not. I've been a Republican registered since 1996. Small government, low taxes, but I understand how it works. My taxes in the Segertown Borough went up last, year before last, but I know what I get. I get snow out of the street in the wintertime, I got a really nice park to take my kids to in the summertime. I don't mind. Do your stinking jobs.
I am Jackie Dutchkite, Woodcock Township resident. The majority of you know me, but for those that don't, I am a mother of three boys who attend Penn Crest School District, a school business manager who has spent the last 10 years in school business, and prior to that, I was a state school auditor. As I have been following the board meetings on social media, I have noticed that many believe taking the school district's total budget and dividing it by the number of students enrolled in the district equals the total cost to educate each student. I would like to explain how that process is not accurate. There are so many factors that come into play in the school budget that most do not realize. A school budget is made up of a lot of different areas, but I would like to point out a few areas that are significantly costly but do not pertain to the direct cost of educating a student in general education. The first area is special education. As this area has the potential to be extremely costly, a special education student could range from a student who just receives services for speech to a student that receives significant amounts of services or maybe is in placement. These students have the potential to be extremely costly, and you never know when one of these students may move into the district during the year. In the past, I have had a special education student that cost over $100,000 to educate for one school year. That is a lot of money, and unfortunately, there is nothing anyone can do about it because we are required by law to educate these students. The extremely hard part is that you never know when one may move into your district, so it's even harder to budget for. A second area is legal fees. This district has spent a large amount of money on legal fees fighting lawsuits. How do these fees play a part in the cost to educate a student? Cyber tuition. If a district is spending $2 million on cyber tuition, once again, how is that considered part of the cost to educate a student enrolled here in a general education student? Transportation is a very tricky area for Penn Crest due to the fact that they rank in the top 10 of school districts for the largest square mile district in the state of Pennsylvania. Transportation is paid for based on mileage, not the number of students being transported. Therefore, Penn Crest has always been faced with a large transportation cost compared to other districts due to the large number of square miles the buses must cover twice in one day. Now, yes, this is part of the cost of educating a student, but you need to remember, we are paying double of what any other district with similar enrollment. What I'm trying to say here is you cannot just divide the budget by the number of students to get a cost of educating a child, because there are so many factors that play into the budget that don't necessarily pertain to every student. You could have child number one that just receives a normal general education and costs maybe $10,000 to educate. You could have child number two that receives general education with speech services, so they may cost $15,000 to educate. And then you may have child number three that has severe needs that costs $150,000 to educate. I hope this makes sense to everyone in this room, and they understand that we cannot put the same price tag on each student, so please stop. Every child that attends Penn Crest deserves the best education possible. I would also like to recognize that Penn Crest has an excellent administration who has been working hard on their district budget. These administrators have spent their careers working in education and have the credentials to be administrators while also keeping up with all the laws, policies, and networking with other districts to be sure they are doing their best for our students. Your business manager has done an excellent job and has been very transparent. I can promise you, no business manager starts their budget season with thinking, let's see how high I can raise the taxes this year. Honestly, we hate to raise taxes because remember, we are also raising our own taxes. No one loves to pay more money. However, we also know what the reality is too. When we create the budget, we try to make cuts and do the best we can prior to even bringing it to the board. If your business manager and administrative team is asking for a tax increase, then trust me, they truly believe a tax increase is necessary to give our students the best education possible. I guarantee they care just as much about the students as all the parents sitting in this auditorium. That is why they work in education. Also, please stop blaming our teachers for the budget crisis. We need these teachers in the classroom to educate our children. If we want to have future nurses, doctors, lawyers, and tradesmen, then we need our teachers. If a student doesn't receive the necessary education, then they cannot succeed in these fields. So I'm asking you, as a mother and as a fellow business manager, to please trust your teachers, your administration, and most importantly, your business manager. If they are guiding you to a tax increase to help maintain the education for the students in our district, then please truly consider passing a tax increase to help keep our district offering a successful education. Thank you.
My name is James Rankin. I'm a member, a resident of Guys Mills, Pennsylvania. I want to start my, of course, this thing would say low battery. Maybe it'll run out. I want to start my talk off with two words, one word, bullying. Last Monday night's meeting was all about bullies. Some of you need to stop bullying board members, and some of the board members need to stop bullying each other. Now, I'm not going to call out those who are doing bullying. You know who you are. I'm just saying, we can solve problems by working together, not insulting each other. I last spoke at Penn Crest in May, and since then, I was referred to as somebody who could not read a simple chart, and I was called a dinosaur. I laughed at both comments because in one way, they're kind of true. As far as a dinosaur goes, I brought some physical visibles. I dig dinosaur bones. I'm a certified paleontologist. So to call me a dinosaur, I guess you're right. I live amongst the dinosaurs. I am a graduate in 1978. When I joined the Marines in 1980, I served as an intel analyst, both at the Pentagon and at the White House. After the Marines, I got earned a bachelor's degree in science. I went on to get a master's in education. I taught for 21 years in the Houston area school, and I returned back here in 2021. Yes, we have some issues to work out. Last week, we were told a two-mil increase would cost between $5 and a four-mil would $5 more, 10. Oh, if that were so true, I contacted my tax collector for Richmond Township. She told me it would be closer between anywhere from seven to 15 and as high as $180 to $190 a year increase on my taxes. I don't live in a big house. I just built a house. I've owned the property for four years. I just built the house, it's very small, and my tax, value of my house was just near the mean average of $40,000. So the five and 10, that's a red herring. It's not true. When you talk to your tax collector, he or she will tell you exactly what you're going to end up paying with these tax increases. I don't mind paying more taxes. Being a Marine, serving this country, my salary was based on taxes, so I understand taxes. And while I was a Marine, I paid taxes. And now retired teaching and retired Marine, I still pay taxes. Yes, I am on a fixed income. Yes, I'm retired. So my second visible for you guys is a toy that I used in my classroom to explain what happens when you go too far. This is a budget, and you're blowing it up. If I keep pulling this toy, little pieces will fall all over the place, and it'll be destroyed. You keep raising taxes, I guarantee you, you'll destroy this community. This community is not destroyed by people leaving. I left for 45 years, and now I'm back. It's destroyed because you're taxing people out of existence, and they're going to leave or they're going to have to, because when you're on a fixed income, only so much money comes in. And then you have to figure out, well, I drive school bus, that gives me a little extra more money. So my wife says, well, you'll just have to see if they have a summer driving program for school buses to help offset the cost of taxes, tax increase. See, because you got to go find someplace outside. But also, I want to warn you, the Social Security Department plays a little trick on you as well. You can only earn so much before they take a dollar out of every dollar you make, over a certain amount. Mine happens to be 22,500, $22,500 a year. That's the most I can make without affecting my Social Security. So we've got to find a way to trim the budget. Everybody wants something, but you've got to find a common ground. I found out that we're paying our assistants $10,000 apiece, and you have five assistant coaches per sport, per school. Gosh, I remember when I played school for here, I had Coach Over, Coach Wentworth, Coach and Jack Randall. I don't think they were getting $10,000. Of course, that was back in the 1970s. Guys, I'm not going to let the crowd bully me, I'm going to continue my speech. Thank you. I'm not in favor of cutting programs. I'm just telling you guys, you got to find a way to make it work, and some things just have to go. Thank you. Hey, my battery didn't run out.
Up next, Laurel Sippi of Woodcock Township.
My name is Laurel Sippi of Woodcock Township. I'm the mother of three Segertown Elementary students. And I did speak to you all last week, and I want to say, at that work session, I listened to so many passionate community members who were against budget cuts, but I also listened to some very passionate board members. One of you, Mr. Valeski, mentioned that your goal was to try and set the district up for future success. And while we may disagree on the way to do that, I actually really appreciate that you said that that's why you think budget cuts are necessary. You know, it occurred to me then that I actually think, and just calm down, everyone, I actually think we do want the same things, or at least I hope we do. I hope that you guys don't truly wish to take away from our students. I hope that you don't want any of our schools or our staff to suffer. You want success, but so do the rest of us that are asking for a tax increase. So what does success truly look like? I'm going to use an analogy that sort of helped me wrap my head around things. Generations of my family have ran successful precision manufacturing and tool and die businesses for years in this community. Like all industries, we haven't been immune to inflation. The rising cost of everything from supplies, utilities, and labor has affected how we do business. But instead of laying people off, we've had to raise the cost of our products. And guess what? Our customers are continuing to buy it because they understand their costs have risen too. Public school can be looked at like this. The pencils, the paper, the textbooks, they've all gone up in cost. The building maintenance and the utilities have gone up, and yes, the teachers' salaries go up, and why shouldn't they? Most of us have probably gotten raises over the last few years. And the school's product, it's the student. And the customers, right here. The parents and the residents living within this district. Building well-rounded, capable graduates is what our community is paying for, because that product is vital to the future of this community. Not only do these graduates hopefully set root here, but they become our future taxpayers. They build the thriving businesses that lead to the economic stimulation in our town. Now, let's say for a moment that we do the opposite. We buckle down to cut costs, we lay off staff. Now our product or our students start to suffer. A less superior product means our customers are going to do business elsewhere. And if you're rolling your eyes and thinking, no, that's not what happens, people don't just leave because of the school, let me remind you of how many families we heard last week say, we moved here for the schools. And I'm one of those families. I went to Meadville. I came here because I wanted something different for my children. If you think that people won't move for a better school district, you're very naive. Our children are the people that we will pretty much do anything for. I look at a four-mil increase as an investment in this premium product. I'm proud of the school district and the experience that my children have had thus far. Much like people pay for a name brand car, bag, or those fancy Apple computers I see you all working with, I'm happy to pay more for a school district that is creating these premium students. Could I pay for a private school? Sure. But keeping our kids here in our local schools is what builds roots in the community. I want other families to see that, realize what we have here, and move here with us. When large companies want to expand, they don't cut budgets, they look for investors, they find more money. Allow our residents to be those investors. Let us invest in this school district. And while I don't think the political affiliation should come into this decision, I think it's clear that it has in some way. I will admit that I'm often guilty of voting for something or someone that I actually don't know much about, simply because of the letter next to their name, assuming that it probably aligns with, you know, my ideals. And I think many of our residents who maybe haven't researched this issue fully and have only read snippets on Facebook here and there, maybe they assume that it's the Republicans who are against raising the taxes, but here's the deal. I'm a proud Republican, and my taxes already go towards supporting a lot of programs that I don't really have a choice in, and maybe even things that I don't necessarily agree with. So now, I'd like my taxes to go towards my own community and my students, who hopefully can and will work once they graduate, and hopes they'll return right here to this district and someday bring more wealth and prosperity to this community and our schools. Please consider a four-mil increase as an investment in not only the schools, but yourselves, guys. You deserve to know that you sat on a board for a premium school district. Let the time that you're so graciously volunteering on this board be remembered as a board that created the best product in schools possible, not the board who tightened the purse strings. And just so you know, that 1% seems to me that I don't see the rest of that 99% here talking tonight, so.
My name is Maelyn Learn. I'm 11 years old, and I'm a resident of Woodcock Township and a student at Segertown. My family moved here when I was only five, and shortly after that, my father died. It was less than a month after his passing that I stepped onto my first school bus and entered the doors of Segertown Elementary School. As you can imagine, grief does weird things to people. I was little, so I don't really remember it affecting me, but I do remember it changing everyone around me. My mom and my family were always sad or really tired. The things that I used to do with my mom and my baby brother didn't happen as much anymore. We didn't get to go to the playground or listen to music and dance around in the living room, or go to movies very much anymore. But school was the one place that everything felt normal. My teachers were always smiling. My guidance counselor was there to listen to me or help me, and I had story thread to me, I sang songs, and I got to run around and play on a playground. I tell you this because school's so much more to some kids than just a place where we learned to read and write. For some of us, it's a sanctuary and a safe place. School's a place where kids who may not have the best stuff happening at home can come and experience things that they wouldn't otherwise. For example, movies, bands, field trips, a solid meal, and adults that they can really trust. I'm sure you see what I'm getting at here. Budget cuts could potentially eliminate a lot of these extra things that make school special. But to me, one of the scariest decisions you could make as a school board is to eliminate the mental health coordinator. In a society where mental health is becoming a huge focus, why would we move backwards in our schools where the most are vulnerable at risk? Why is mental Why is mental health such a focus? Well, because things have changed since most of you were in school. I'm sure some of you had or knew a bully, right? Well, at two-thirty when you went home after school, that was that, at least for the evening. You didn't have to worry about or think about bullies. It's not like that anymore. Now the bullying follows us home. Social media has given bullies direct access to their targets twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Suicide is the third losing cause of death among kids ages fourteen to eighteen. Twenty-two percent of students admit to seriously considering suicide. We need all the mental health services that we can get. Our mental health coordinator helps navigate those services for the students who need them the most. And it's not always the kids getting bullied. Sometimes it's the bullies themselves that need help and that helps all of us. I focused on the mental health aspect today because I think that all the other potential eliminations, like librarians, sports funding, and music programs have already been touched on. But it's all of those things that are just as important as this. That's the thing. It's all of these things that make my school special and what it is to me. Taking away even one of those aspects of school could ruin a child's year. You could be taking away the one class or person that that student looks forward to every single day. I stand before you as a student who's overcome so much because of my wonderful school, teachers, and staff. I am confident that I will go on to accomplish wonderful things. In fact, I'm hoping for a career in politics because I know people like yourself can make a very positive impact on the world around them. Please do not eliminate the mental health coordinator. And furthermore, please vote yes to a four mil increase. I want my little brother to have the same experience that I've had at SES. I want all students, no matter their home life or background, to have this amazing place to go and thrive. I implore all of you to remember that your job is to serve the students, to serve me. Am I not worth ten dollars a month? Is the future of all youth in our district not worth ten dollars a month? Please say no to budget cuts of any kind tonight. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Lenhart and I live in Richmond Township. I have two children. Many from Maplewood know my son Zach Lenhart. He's super smart and a very talented saxophone player and singer. He took all the honors and AP classes he could. He dual enrolled with Clarion College his senior year, along with marching band, jazz band, concert band, and chorus, all while working. We went to so many PMEA jazz concert and chorus events for districts and regionals over the years that my head spun. And he went to States two years in a row with his saxophone. Some of the board members may remember him speaking in front of you when he was the first student from Maplewood unanimously nominated, according to Mr. Wolfarth, for the Class Act Award. He also thanked the board for the support and allowing him to attend with Mr. Gardner or Mr. Zercher the PMEA events that he did, saying those events meant a great deal to him puts it mildly. He will soon be starting his second year at Penn State Baron, dual majoring in accounting and finance. Many from Maplewood probably don't know my daughter Grace Lenhart quite as well. Kindergarten first and second grades, I went to every parent teacher conference. I constantly heard she was smart, kind, empathetic, and always helpful. She's a joy to have in class. She will learn at her own pace. Goodness gracious, that was a hard act to follow. All those wonderful reports you want to hear about your child at that age. We struggled at home with reading and homework, but she's smart and she will learn at her own pace. By summer before third grade, when she couldn't read a kid's birthday card, we truly realized we have a problem. I was told by a friend you had to request for your child to be evaluated for a learning disability. I didn't know that. But I was able to call the grade school during the summer, speak with the secretary who was able to coordinate with the school psychologist, that Grace would start testing at the beginning of the school year. I didn't want her losing any more time in the classroom if she needed extra help. When I went to the meeting after testing completed, one of the first sentences from the Pancress psychologist was, Grace fell through the cracks. I kind of knew that by this point. We confirmed there was a learning disability, although she couldn't put a name to it, but that we would start an IEP to help her catch up to her peers and work towards reading at grade level. We also had her evaluated by a pediatric psychologist in Erie. Grace is dyslexic and has ADHD. The school was able to offer her smaller reading groups, aides in the classroom, to help read passages so she could answer, along with one-on-one and small groups with the reading teacher outside of the classroom. We also got her private tutoring that focused on dyslexia to further help her get caught up to her peers. With all of this, she's now a senior at Maplewood. She's been on the honor roll and strives to do her best. She's in color guard and enrolled in the Vet Tech program at the VOTech and looks forward to a career working with animals. She shared with me last night she didn't think she would have passed seventh grade if it were not for the aides in the classroom helping her. What's my point with all this? I sat here last week and listened to the discussion that there could potentially be twenty-seven students in a grade class, uh, grade school class. I saw in the first draft there would be cuts in aides and staffing. Now that may not happen this year. But with attrition, aides and support staff could possibly not be hired if the position is open and that would be devastating. Costs are going up. We could be in the same situation with cuts looming next year and the year after. Twenty-seven students in a grade school class. If there were twenty-seven Zacks in a classroom, great, can you fit more chairs in? But you're not gonna have that. More likely, there will be four to five Zacks, three to four Braces, and the rest are everywhere in between, including three or four that can't manage their emotions or anger and throw everything from tantrums to chairs and desks, making it impossible for the teachers to teach, let alone look for and help the students who need more help. How many students will fall through the cracks because they are smart, quiet, and helpful? It was stated last week only one percent of the electorate was at the meeting. However, pretty sure we heard well over one percent spoken whenever all of the speakers were saying the same thing. Please consider and vote for a four mil increase. Get the staffing programs and opportunities back on track for these students. Stop the hemorrhage to other districts, cyber, and people moving out of the area for better opportunities, both educational and extracurricular. The idea of donate money to the school district was offered as a way to increase funds. I was absolutely taken aback when I read that in the newspaper. I can't even begin to account the hours or dollars my husband and I have donated over the years to Maplewood schools and programs. Donating will not increase tax dollars and allow Pancress to recoup state funds that are available and we will not be eligible for at this point. Increasing taxes will. It was also stated that teachers, Mr. Brown and Mr. Brooks invited me to come on Facebook. You all invited me to come here. Pancress School Board invited me and everyone else here as a community member, a taxpayer, and by having an open school board meeting with time, dates, and location on the Pancress website. Do I support the teachers? Yes, because they supported my kids and every other kid. I am here for the students that come after my kids, for the students who will be our future maintaining and growing this area. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tori Kenny. I am a resident of Cambridge Springs and with the exception of sixth grade, I attended Cambridge Springs for my whole life. Now, before certain board members dismiss this crowd as conspiracy arranged by others, particularly those plus, name of B, who I don't have any contact with at all, I want to take a moment to explain the concept of organizing. I was raised by an environmental organizer and my current career is community organizing. When an issue comes up that people are concerned about, they speak out, they come together, share their experiences, and work together to find a way to resolve said issue. Yes, we have asked each other to come here, to show up, to support the cause, because that's how it works. Community is formed through communication. Thank you, Mrs. Miller, for teaching me about root words. If the people here didn't care about what was happening, they wouldn't take the time and effort to be here. Trust me, I've tried until I'm blue in the face to get people to show up to a neighborhood meeting with free pizza. They don't do it if they don't care. I, if, sorry, lost my place. There is a massive amount of people here tonight when we consider normal board meetings. And that amount of people here represents the majority, not the one percent. With that said... Sorry, very anxious tonight. But that said, I took the time, out of work, drove all the way out to Maplewood because I want what is best for these kids. Recently, people have been sharing their reasons why. And I shared mine, but I do want to summarize it now. I struggled a lot in school. I'm a very smart person, but the school system failed me. It failed my neurodivergent brain. It failed to protect me from bullies. It failed to keep me from my volatile home life, which always made my life so much harder. Long after I graduated, I was diagnosed with ADHD, autism, and complex PTSD. But there are a few amazing teachers that helped me feel like I was supported and that it was worth it for me to stay around. Without that handful of people, I would not be standing here today. I would not be anywhere, being able to advocate for children that have stories like mine that needed to be protected. In my opinion, this board is treating kids like game pieces in some strange power play. School became the only place that I was safe, despite bullies, some of which weren't just students, but staff and faculty as well. I knew that I could always find someone in that school to keep me grounded. But those people could no longer be around to support the kids that need them because of the choices that this board is trying to make. The ones that are left could be the bullies, the ones that made my life hell and will do that to more students. Again, in my personal opinion, the worst person that I've ever met in my life is being consulted on decisions being made tonight, and to me, that's terrifying. I want to remind the board that every decision that you make could be the decision of a child's life. I don't have children of my own, in part because I don't want to watch a human that I am responsible for be treated as collateral damage in whatever is being played here. And I think John Green said it the best. Every second of every day of your life, you benefit from public education. So let me tell you why I like to pay school taxes, even though I don't personally have a kid in school. It's because I don't like living in a country with a bunch of stupid people. I barely make above a livable wage and I will happily pay an extra five, ten, even twenty dollars a month if it means that students can receive the support that they need to succeed. Not enough support is the cause of low enrollment. Treating students like they don't really matter, letting them suffer the consequences of the actions of others is the reason they are leaving. Please do better by these kids. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rod Miller. I'm a nineteen-eighty-three graduate of Cambridge Springs High School. Want to thank Mr. Brown, Mr. Wuleski for sort of being the push on allowing everybody to speak and then everybody to vote for that, so I do appreciate that. Also, I am here of my own accord. I am married to a teacher. She did not ask me to come. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Brown did not ask me to come. I came on my own. A heavy reliance on spending cuts to close a budget slows recovery and weakens the economy over the long term. Reducing and diminishing the quality of education threatens to make our economy less productive, less competitive in coming years and in coming decades. A RAN study in two thousand nine found that an increase in students' educational attainment is associated with substantial value for taxpayers over time. And it also found that better educated people contribute in the long term more to the tax basis. Those with more education draw less from social service programs. More educated people are less likely to incur incarceration costs. With investment in education, the quality of the workforce increases and improves and it, uh, output grows in our workforce. In addition, the quality of life for those that with a better education is higher, their health is better, and their families improve. Public investment in education increases the productivity, which is a long-term driver of economic growth and earnings. Public investment in education can leverage private investment, which leads to job creation, better housing, and overall faster growth in our economy. Public investments in education are essential to economic growth and to human well-being. The net benefits of these investments are economic growth, job creation, and tax, increased tax revenue benefits for the, for the communities. The Washington Center for Equitable Growth said public investment, high-quality education, especially early education, pre-K and kindergarten, is, uh, highly generates large payoffs in the long term. Long-term studies show that investing in children delivers a great number of lasting important benefits for the children, their families, the communities, and society in general, including taxpayers. Over time, these investments boost productivity and, uh, amply pay for themselves as it is. As I said last week, schools are the heartbeat, the identity of the community. Strong schools solidify and improve the tightness of communities. We need to take advantage of our communities and advantage of our positives and things that we do have. We have tight, well-talking communities that strongly support our schools. We have affordable housing and building sites, low taxes. Even with a four mil increase, our taxes are low. I know I own properties in neighboring areas and my taxes are much more there. And close proximity to urban areas, so let's take advantage of those. I, I coached for many years and I talked to the kids about training and about working out and I said, you know, it's about short-term inconvenience for long-term improvement. And that's what we need to look like, look at. Communities are not destroyed by raising taxes. They're destroyed by degrading our schools and our communities and, and tearing those down because of poor, poor schools. Mr. Renkin talked about a red herring and I find that somewhat amusing. I do thank him for his service, but I find that amusing when he states that about the cost of our coaches, our assistant coaches, head coaches. The cost of our head coaches is not even close to the amount he stated, let alone the assistant coaches, which is less than half of that. So I guess what I would say, I don't know the numbers. I didn't call him a tax person. But if he's going to grossly overstate the cost of coaches, I'm not sure why we would believe that he didn't grossly overstate what he stated about the tax increase. Thank you.
Contract that's today, pull his names. Up next, we will have Michael Weber from Cambridge Township.
Evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the Pancress School Board, my name is Michael Weber and I stand before you again today, not just as a concerned citizen, but as a parent who believes deeply in the value of education. I am here to urge you to consider raising taxes to support our schools in action that is not only necessary, but is also the right thing to do for our community and our children. Throughout history, our community has consistently demonstrated a commitment to doing the right thing. As a community, we come together to collect cans, to grant wishes for sick kids in our area. Sophia's warriors have banded together to support this young girl from our district in her greatest time of need. Today, we face another crucial moment where we must decide whether we will continue to uphold this legacy of support, this time in the name of education for our children. The quality of our education system is the cornerstone of our community's future. Our schools are more than just buildings. They are the nurturing grounds for our next generation of leaders, thinkers, and innovators. Investing in our schools means investing in our children and by extension, investing in the future of our community. I understand that raising taxes is not a decision to be taken lightly. However, it is a necessary step if we're to maintain and improve the quality of education that our children receive. Our teachers work tirelessly to provide the best possible education. Yet today, we are discussing whether or not we should eliminate positions crucial to our children's success in the district. Our students deserve the best. They deserve extracurricular programs that enrich their learning experiences and support services that address their diverse... services that address their diverse needs. The board majority has expressed reservations about raising taxes. To these members, I respectfully ask you to consider broader, excuse me, the broader implications of your decision. Reflect on the times when our community has come together in the past to support initiatives that were vital for our collective well-being. Think about the legacy we wish to leave behind for our children. By voting to raise taxes, you're choosing to prioritize education, to honor the commitment that we have made to our children and ensure that they have the tools they need to succeed. History has shown us that doing the right thing often requires courage and foresight. It requires us to look beyond immediate concerns and focus on long-term benefits. When we invest in education, we are not just spending money, we are sowing seeds that will yield prosperous and vibrant, yield a prosperous and vibrant community for years to come. Let's not shy away from this responsibility. Let us take the opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to our children and their future by raising taxes. We are making a powerful statement that education is a priority, and we are willing to make the necessary sacrifices to support it. Let's remain a learning community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I will hope that you make the right decision for our schools, our children, and our community. I need you to. Mike Weber.
I'm Delores Hale from the Cambridge Springs Borough. I've been a Pencrest taxpayer for 47 years. We, Cambridge Springs Borough was a recipient of a Rural Rocks Grant a couple of years ago by Northwestern RBC, where we did some placemaking. And one of the biggest things that we earmarked was, we need to attract young families to come to our community. That is our future, that is our growth. Without young families wanting to move here, stay here, live here, we are all going to fail. Our school district and our community are two of my biggest passions. I dedicate a lot of my time, literally hundreds of hours each month, I have them documented, to this community and our school. Attracting young families, the first thing they look at is the school district. We are making, it saddens me that we are making news for all the wrong reasons. I want families to move here, I want families to love our school like I did, I want Pencrest to be back where it was years ago. It seems to be deteriorating. When we decide, and we may comment that, I'm not raising taxes, I'm not voting for raising taxes by members of this board, if you're on the board just to not raise taxes, you have no business being here. Thirty years ago, I was part of the original strategic planning for Pencrest. I may be the only person in the room that is still part of that committee. The mission statement from there says, "Our mission is to provide resources and opportunities that challenge students, assess their educational process, and provide a system of support and empower all to be confident lifelong learners." We are cutting that short, day, every day. We need to get back to that. I'm passionate about that. I want, like I said, I want young families to come here. Our borough, your, that school, we're both entities of multimillion-dollar businesses. We need to plan 10 years down the line, not make a decision for just this year, let's just cut taxes. We'll figure it out, we'll cut it. Where are we going to be 10 years from now? That's our mentality. We need to grow. We've got the resources, we've got the wonderful community. Our community, our small towns, and our school have something really special here. I want that to continue, I'm passionate about that. I get disheartened when I read in the paper or come to these meetings and see the mentality that's sitting up here running our future. I just ask that, when you say we can't afford to raise taxes, we can't afford not to. I am one of those baby boomers, okay? I'm retired on a fixed income. I had kids in school for 16 years, I pay taxes for 47 already. I hope to pay another 20 years of taxes at Pencrest School District. I want to see this community thrive, I want to be so super proud of this community, and we can do this. We're here to help, we're here to be part of this. Let's just do it right, okay? I'm asking for a formal tax increase. Thank you.
My name's Brian Hanley, Sagertown, Woodcock Borough. First of all, I'd like to welcome Sean Ford. Welcome. I'd also like to make, point out just a few of the board members that I had the opportunity to talk with. Mr. Welsky, he was actually, when I talked to him, I was in his store and he was stocking shelves. He wasn't sitting behind a desk, he was out there working, and I appreciated that. Mr. Chaucie, he and I had a little conversation, he picked out the spot for breakfast, and it was one of my favorites, Dunkin' Donuts. So I wasn't going to miss that meeting. When I was talking to him, and we talked for at least an hour, I didn't think, I didn't think he was going to pick the way that I wanted him to pick. I just kept the vibe in the room and talking to him, but he showed me to be a man of honor. We talked about Mr. Ford coming in to a situation that's hard to come into. A superintendent is a tough position, tough position, let alone coming in a position where we have a battle on the board. And we had a superintendent, a few years ago, we called him the Axeman. He came in, and I believe it was 39, don't quote me on the exact number, 39 positions got cut. That means 39 families were affected. Now, six years later, or whatever number of years, here we are again, wanting to cut 29 more. How much more can we cut until there's nothing left? So I want to commend him. He said something to me, and I told him that Mr. Ford would be the Axeman, and that he would instantly, instantly be hated. That's a strong word. Instantly hated by the majority of Pencrest people, just because we brought him in to do something that nobody else wanted to do. I give him courage. I give him kudos. Mr. Chaucie called Mr. Ford, and I appreciate this, he told him what I said. I'm not taking any kind of credit for what I said, but Mr. Chaucie called him and said, "Mr. Ford, we don't want to put you in that position." So he told me, he goes, "I will vote for how Mr. Ford wants me to vote." And he was a man of his word last time we were here, and I really, really appreciate that. Whether he totally agreed with what Mr. Ford said or not, he was a man of his word. I don't want to stay here and be too serious, because you know the saying, they say, "They save the best for last." I wouldn't keep your hopes up. I want to give you just an example of what teachers do in the classroom. I taught for 37 years, I told him, I'm not going to bore you with the facts. But in my position as a phys ed teacher in the elementary school, a lot of times, we were very low on substitute teachers. So they would ask me, or volunt, tell me, to go into a classroom. Well, I was in this one classroom, and I'm a winger, I can wing things, I'm winging things right now. I had other things to say until I got up here, and then all of a sudden, I changed. But I was in this classroom, it was a kindergarten classroom, and they asked me to read a book. Now, some of you might think, oh, phys ed teacher reading a book. That's funny.
It is.
Not that funny. But anyhow, I'm reading this book, and I'm, my wife is a librarian, and I one time walked into the library, and she was doing her librarian voice, you know, changing tones and doing all these fancy things, and I was embarrassed. I was embarrassed because people might think that I was, you know, that's my wife, and you know, I'm taking credit for hearing her say all those fancy. So anyhow, I'm trying to be like her, and I'm reading this book to these kindergarten kids, and I'm really getting into it. And one little girl raises her hand, and I thought, well, I got to her. And she says, "Mr. Hanley, why are your ears so big?" And teachers have to, they have to go on a fly, and I said, "It's better to hear you with..." and I kept going. Now, I'm also a golf coach, I did not retire from that. And Mr. Ford, I would like to talk about that salary. $10,000 sounds really good to me, since I make four. And I have no assistant coaches, and I am the van driver. And we have a saying in our vans, and I probably shouldn't say this in front of Mr. Mason back there, what happens in a van stays in the van. I'll let you think what you can. All right, get back now to what we're here for, is whether we need to raise taxes or not. I think everyone of you sitting here knows why we need to raise taxes. I'm going to read, this is from the movie Hoosiers. If you've ever watched the movie Hoosiers, I believe it's about 30 years old. There was an actor in the movie called Dennis Hopper, he played a drunken man. And Gene Hackman was the head coach. Gene Hackman wants to make this guy successful because his son's on his basketball team, and he goes to, he goes to Dennis Hopper. Okay. Can I just read this, and I promise I'll sit down? This is what Dennis Hopper says, because Gene Hackman accused him of being an alcoholic in his own house. He says, this is Gene Hopper saying, "Look, mister, there's two kinds of dumb. The guy that gets naked and runs out in the snow and barks at the moon, and the other one does the same thing in my living room. The first one doesn't matter much to me, much, but the second one I have to take offense to. I have to make actions to. I believe some of us up here who don't have an interest in the game, we vote one way. But those of the back here who knows what the most important interest in the game is, that's why we want the tax increase." So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Item 6A, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved attached barber national student ESY agreement.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item B, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved attached Perseus House Agreement.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item C, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved letter agreement with Crawford County Youth Services for the Students Aid Assistance Program Services.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item D, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved E-Grant Signature Resolution for Sean Ford.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item E, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved the attached Northwest Tri County IU lending equipment agreement.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item F, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved the school-based access program agreement.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item G, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved Penn West Edinburgh Internship Agreement.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item H, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved Crawford County Fairgrounds Police Agreement for the Title I Family Act.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item I, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved the acceptance of the American Association of Woodburners Grant for Bert Sturtevant and May Wood High School.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item J, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved one Bethesda student to graduate.
Second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried.
Item K is the motion that was tabled at the May voting meeting on interactive smart The board would like to take action on that table.
So we need to untable it, is what you're saying? So I'll move to untable the motion.
I'll second. Motion in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor.
Do we have any questions?
I just was wondering, can we just re-table it, just a little further into this and make sure, I mean, it's $100,000, unless there's some timeline that we need them right now prior to the start of the school year, I think we have time to look into it a little further?
The motions are to be made, so we need to have a motion.
I understand, that's my comment.
Sean, do you have any comments?
The only thing that I can recall from talking with this board before is, we don't have another board meeting until August, so those, if we were to buy them, probably would not be installed until, probably at the earliest of the Christmas break, because students are in the classrooms.
They need professional development, too, with teachers.
What's that?
Teachers need to be able to plan and give them professional development.
They need professional development and training.
To use them.
So essentially, if we table it, student use would be delayed for next, not 24, 25, until 25, 26.
It's not untabled because we didn't vote on it.
They voted on it. Right. Well, we made the motion untabled.
But we haven't.
I just, I mean, since we're having this discussion.
After we vote on the table.
Yes, they should.
And then, once that's untabled, then we can have discussions upon the actual motion.
So, I guess.
We have to vote on it.
Yeah, so this is a time for discussion.
Do they proceed?
Proceed, right, because.
Do they vote on the motion untabled before discussion?
No.
Sorry, I have to serve now. Can you repeat that again, everybody can hear?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so the comment, I guess, that I have, is, in hearing what Amanda said, and hearing the comments that we have tonight, and hearing the comments from last week, this is about the students. And I guess, I mean, yeah, it's $100,000, I get it. But this is for the students, the teachers need to be trained, the teachers need to learn. Technology is expensive. I mean, I have an iPad from the school district. We all have technology of some sort from the school district. And if we continue to table it and not pay for this stuff, you know, we're not investing in our kids or the teachers. So in my opinion, tabling it and not moving this down the line is another step in the wrong direction.
Any other comments?
My comment.
I don't think you're on.
Yeah, my comment, I remember Sean saying that technology is the future. I have pros and cons on this with the smart board, the glorified chalkboard. It'll take time, I guess, Amanda, to have the teachers learn. I understand.
Yeah, the math department had them in their classrooms last year. So that was the goal, is to try to refresh all the departments, because the current technology is 15 to 20 years old, and it's going to start failing. And some of it is a security threat.
Yeah, I was talking to Amanda, she said it'd be $3,000 for a new smart board.
Yeah, that's, if you look at the price breakdown of the attachment, yeah.
Then you said the science teachers would be the ones.
Yeah, science, and then we would, the remaining teachers in fourth grade and sixth grade would get the smart boards, yes.
Again, Sean Ford said that science is important to him. Again, I have my opinions. For me, it's a no-brainer for Sean, so I would say yes to it.
I'm just going to say one thing, the smart boards, Mr. Chaucie said the glorified chalkboard, that's the way I used the thing. But I actually visited a classroom, I actually with Mrs. Muffler years ago, and she did a tutorial on the smart board. The interaction that the T- The interaction that the teacher and students can have is amazing. The things they can do on that smart board increases the, they're up like the next level of learning. And other teachers that I've spoke with over the years, I'm kinda with Mr. Chowson on that, I am like more anti-technology, I'm gonna be honest with you, I stink at it. But, it's not me getting educated, so I have to vote for this.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Randy, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, Randy, can you hear me?
Okay. We listened a lot tonight from people who are expressing their discontent about people leaving the area because of the buildings. A tour of the buildings is... If you say one tour of the buildings, then you can see why people would maybe not choose Penn Press to come here. And, the investment in the smart boards, I believe, from listening to Amanda, this was already approved last year, and this is in the budget for this year, correct?
Yes.
It's already been budgeted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was talking to get into the cognitive theory about having the kids, you know, how they're able to come up to the class and interact, and get out of their seats and do stuff. I mean, I believe, one of the reasons why I ran for school board is because I see just how archaic, and I use that word, and I don't use it lightly, how archaic our buildings look and feel. They do not feel like twenty-first century learners are being developed there. It feels like nineteen-seventies learners are being developed there for nineteen-eighties skills. We're not, it doesn't look like our children are going to be learning twenty-first century skills when you walk through some of our buildings. This is a step in the right direction, I've been working with the smart board for over twenty years, between my student teaching and my actual teaching. It seems archaic that we don't have these up and running correctly, so, that's how I feel about it. I won't get into the cognitive brain-based research on some of this stuff, but, there was a man last, last week that spoke on technology too, I can't remember his name, I wish I could, he was extraordinarily compelling to me, and his statements have stayed with me. So, that's all.
Any other comments or questions? Now, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so it's been untabled, so it's on now to vote on. Resolve the Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached quote for thirty-four V4 smart board boards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second. Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save.
Aye.
Was his four, because he came in late, I think.
That's why.
Randy?
Yeah?
Can you give us your vote, please?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, on next to the board's next report. I've asked Dave Dixon if he can give a couple minutes of construction update, do you have any?
Just a quick summer update, since we're at day two, for all the projects. There's a couple of projects that are coming up again tonight, that we had here in May, that were tabled, that will lend to maybe some of the things that we're doing this summer, for this location out here at Maplewood. The roofing project at Cambridge Springs Elementary School is underway, they started about two weeks ago getting your safety equipment up there, and they actually started yesterday, today, starting the tear off, so that part's going. The Giza program at the high school and elementary school started right at the end of April at this time. The locker room facilities have been gutted, they're starting to get finishes put around, getting to rough ends, and then they'll start on that. Everything so far, right now, is on schedule to complete by the time the school starts. Coming from May's meeting, we have been in some conversations with trying to get some timber management companies located to secure, that information will be coming to you as further into summer, as we get some more information that way. Same thing with solar companies, we have had a couple of conversations with two different companies, again, as we get more information coming, we'll let you know with that. We also started a Phase Five, early discussion for what we'll be continuing to do in next year at the Cambridge location. I think that's pretty much it, I have, we've actually worked on a couple of grants, coming in here to DCED, had an Act Thirty-three grant that went out, and we have another grant that we're trying to go for facility side, that would be due the end of June.
Okay, before you go, have we set up the next facilities meeting? Have we talked about the next facilities committee meeting?
We talked a little bit internally of trying to, as we get through the end of June here, is try to maybe put something out to you folks to do a walkthrough. Allowing, I'm trying to get with them right now to get the scope of what's going on, and then to get you guys to put on it.
Right, that would be in August sometime, I get that.
Okay.
I did, I was trying to remember if we had talked about committee meeting...
Right.
Last time, but then we kinda...
That's where, I'm just real initial into what I'm trying to do, trying to get it set, and then we'll plan... I would give a say like towards the end of July, beginning of August, if that worked, okay? That gives them a little bit of time to get the stuff together.
I wasn't worried about the walkthrough part, I just meant, to start talking about next year already, just try and get it...
Definitely October, definitely, definitely October.
If it's sooner, that'd be better. I mean, so you have...
Right, right, I agree, I agree.
So, we can see some numbers too, sooner. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, item B, resolve Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the listed student transportation drivers. Second. Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried.
Mr. President, can I do a point of order, please? Okay, I am the one who tabled, asked us to table all these things, up until we had our superintendent here. So, I am trying to move now that we untable C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Well, not all, six of them are tabled, only...
Yeah. I just did the ones that were more tabled.
Okay.
C, E, and G.
Yeah, C, D, and G are tabled.
So, all the ones that I moved to table, I would like to, this time, make a motion to untable all of them.
Motion in the second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, this is Ryan.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Can you hear me, okay? I have to, I have to abstain from Charlie, the hotel, all six of them, just to let you know.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I didn't hear what you said.
Yes, he has to stay.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried. Okay, so now I'll go through that they've been untabled. Item D is the asphalt repair. Resolve that the Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached bid for asphalt repair at Maplewood High School, from the one A construction, in the amount of fifty-one, four fifty. So, move?
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions?
I have a question. So, I wasn't in your finance committee or your meetings, there's a lot going on at Maplewood. Are all of these repairs for the same parking lot?
Dave, can you...
Yes, these are, we, this is the fourth year of a rotation of what we've come back through with the schools. We started Sacred Town, did the elementary school year one, high school year two, then we went to Maplewood Elementary last year, and we're doing the work here at Maplewood High School this year.
Okay, so, D says Maplewood High School asphalt repair, E says Maplewood High School tarantip.
Yes.
F, Maplewood High School tarantip. G, Maplewood High School tarantip ultimate pit. H, Maplewood High School, so this is why I'm asking, is it all the same parking lot?
If I, I'll let, if I may, it's been untabled, correct? So, if we are on D, you are voting right now on the Maplewood High School asphalt repair. One section of parking lot in the back that we had to mill and relay, so that's one component of the entire project. So, it is separate, it was bid separately, and this is what you'd be voting on, excuse me, right now. And then I'll work you down through it, if that's okay?
That's great, because I'm...
Sure, so you are doing just the asphalt repair portions?
For that whole section.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Say what?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is this a quick fix, or is this gonna be like, something's gonna last here, because I'm not...
No, I have some good answer for it.
This here is really the fix, I can't come in and really do a tarantip of a layer to try to seal here because of the elevation that's out back here. So, that's why we're milling, I have one section called out to do, for them to mill down for, at least four inches in the base, it's all called out in the spec of how this all goes. So, you are actually milling and putting new black top down, similar to what you would see on some of the roads, depending on what they're calling out. But that's what, how this project is called at, this portion.
So, we should see the regular twenty-year life, or, I mean...
Correct.
So, it's not something that we'll have to do again next year? I don't want you to get in that. I was gonna ask that question.
Right, right.
Are they milling and reusing, or are they laying?
They're milling, we're collecting the millings on site, and they're bringing in new to put down.
Any other questions? We had a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried. And the next two are for tarantips, and David, if you want to relay the difference between the two for everybody.
So, the way I called the specifications out is I took the remaining portions of the parking lot at Maplewood High School, and the one portion I built as an add alternate. Meaning, I wanted to get a number to see what was, it's actually probably of the lots, the biggest one's a student lot. That lot had been paved approximately ten, eleven years ago. It's starting to crack, you know, do whatever, if we got a decent enough price coming back in here to do it, do the whole thing, and you're sealed it, and then you're back on the seven-year rotation. Okay, I think I made the comment at the last meeting, that add alternate, if you don't elect to do that, you don't need to do that. But, the remaining component of the parking lot is all lumped together, if you choose to do it, the rest of the lot will be done in a tarantip, or you don't choose to do it, however you want to look at that.
So, that, that twenty-six thousand, or twenty-seven thousand, oh, that's, I think, that would be added on for the total seventy-five thousand for the entire parking lot.
That is correct, so you had a base bid of forty-seven thousand, six twenty-three, you had the add alternate for that one lot, the big lot right there of twenty-six, nine seventy-three. If you choose to do both, I think your total's seventy-four thousand, five hundred ninety-seven. If you do not choose to do the alternate, we'll back out the twenty-six, and your total will be forty-seven, six twenty-three.
But, if we don't do it, that twenty-six thousand, to do the rest, we'd be probably having to get more for them to come back, it's way cheaper.
Down the road, you're exactly right.
Because they're all here, they're not moving equipment again.
Economy's a scale, yes.
So... Business sense, it makes sense to do the whole thing now.
Can you just go through and do the resolution then?
Yep.
All right, so first, for item F, resolve Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached bid to tarantip Maplewood High School from suit code base amount forty-seven, six twenty-three. So, move?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Of course, you got the extension from Ryan. Okay, item H, the Alt bid, resolve Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached bid to tarantip Maplewood High School from suit code, add-on, Alt amount of twenty-six, nine seventy-three. So, move?
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried. Okay, on next, financial report, Treasury reports, item A, resolve Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached Treasury reports.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried. Item B, resolve the Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the payment of the attached disbursement.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, save. Motion carried. Item C, resolve Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the attached budget transfers from May. So, move? Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, save. Motion carried. Item D, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year general operating fund budget adoption. Resolve the Penn Press Board of School Directors approved the final fiscal year general operating fund budget and the annual taxation resolution for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as listed below, and authorize the business manager to prepare the PDE twenty-twenty-eight budget documents.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions?
I guess the comment that I'm gonna have here, thank you for everybody that came out tonight and last week, I appreciate hearing from you. In, hold on a second, I gotta see the name of the, last student. Was it Miss Lauren?
Yeah.
Just so, full disclosure, the four-mil increase does not include the mental health coordinator. So, that's something that this school board still needs to discuss and have more discussion on. I feel is absolutely critical, but that position is still retained in this district, not really sure where the money's coming from, but it's important. The four-mil increase is still not gonna give us the Title I reading support, it's not gonna give us the mental health coordinator, it's not gonna give us a full-time music teacher in Sacred Town, it's not gonna give us a lot of things. But, it's also not gonna cut, like, to the bone, you know? And, I guess, as a board member, as a parent, as a mom, I just, I feel for these kids. These, these kids need this, and it's ten dollars a month, and I'm, I just, I don't know, I, 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 I'm, I hear what you guys are saying in the audience, I'm imploring this board to do what's right for the students, please.
I just want to clarify, so, item D, because it doesn't say in the recommended action, but we read, item D has the four-mil tax increase, item E has the two-mil tax increase. So, just so everyone understands, yep, so just for clarification on that, and then I'll offer my comments, I'm not gonna go round and round with this tonight, but, I'll be voting no on both of these budgets tonight, I think everybody in this room already knew that. I made it clear in January that I will not vote for a tax increase, the budget on the table tonight will have either a four or a two-mil tax increase. There's many reasons why I won't vote for a tax increase, but the biggest reason is because I believe it's just plain irresponsible with our dwindling enrollment numbers. We have had every option to control spending, but sadly, the law has been bought that more money means better education, it doesn't. It doesn't. The theme of compromise has been big during this budget. I've heard that word many times, meet in the middle. I believe compromise is the reason our country's in the mess that it is. We've been compromising for far too long on what's right. Pencrest needs to make strategic changes to build a strong, to build stronger schools and help with the, help taxpayers in a struggling economy.
I just wanted to say, um, as hard as this contract, in 1889, Mark Twain said, "There's more than one way to skin a cat." We want the same thing. Those of us who are trying to balance the budget care very much about teaching the children that you don't just keep spending. That when you run out of money in the household, you can't spend anymore. After you graduate, you can't go to mom and dad for a loan every month. We're just trying to teach them through this action that, go ahead and laugh, that's so disrespectful. You want respect, so do we. But anyway.
Order, please.
Hey, hey, come on. Lose quiet while you guys spoke, please.
All I'm saying is having a zero balance with our plan, and based on the number of students we've lost in enrollment compared to the number of teachers that have been lost in the same time period, they're not...
They're the same thing, 22%, but you don't know that!
That's all that's here.
Chicken move, chicken move.
Well, you know, you can make your comments, uh...
You can make your comments however you want, but the truth of the matter is, we have a decline in decrease because the board for the last 10 years has not invested in this school district. I know the countless families who love this community, they're now living in Fairview, General McLean, Port LeBeau. They pay a lot higher taxes than they do now, but they really... And the school board actually invests in their students, and I think it was General McLean this year that asked for a two-mill increase, and the board said, "You know what? Let's instill a force, that way we've got some cushion." That's because they're proactive and they're smart. Cutting taxes does not make better education. You can say it however you want, you can believe however you want. Everything costs money. Our teachers cost us money, buying supplies for our students costs money, and we can't just say we're gonna get a music teacher. If we do not supply or fund the music program, the teachers, I don't wanna say workless, but they're fighting to lose a battle. The band program, if we don't invest in instruments, how's the band director gonna continue on teaching band? If we don't have the equipment the teachers need to teach the math, the sciences, and everything else they need, how are they supposed to improve test scores? I'm gonna give you a couple examples. And one I will say is my daughter, she taught at intervention class in high school. She had 31 students in science that were well below proficient at the beginning of the year. She busted her butt, along with those 31 students who were kicked butt. Now, she doesn't have a PSSA score yet, but they were well over proficient. She did that with 31 kids, her position's been eliminated. Next year, what's those kids gonna do? "We cut that?" Well, you don't wanna raise taxes, that's great. What are those 31 kids gonna do? Who's gonna do that job? Everybody says, "Let's cut, let's cut, let's cut." Who's gonna do the stinking job that jobs still need to be done? Nobody seems to understand that. We have two people just bound and determined, no tax increase. We haven't had a general fund tax increase in five years, and it shows. Our district shows. I had two families reach out, they are gone. We lost eight kids for next year that bought houses north of us and paying higher taxes. They don't care about taxes, they care about their kids. I care about my kids, I care about my grandkids. But best of all, when I was at graduation in Cambridge Springs, Kylie Gerber, she knew every one of those students and every trial that those kids have been through. And let me tell you, it was one of the proudest moments that Randy and I got to do. I've done it eight years, and it's the best time of my life. Those kids are why we're up here fighting. That's why I'm here, and we need the four-mill, and we're gonna have the same fight next year.
Yes, Randy, go ahead.
Thank you, I hope I didn't interrupt somebody, I felt like there was a pause, so. A few things, I'm trying real hard to keep, you know, personal, my personal views out, and I wanna look at facts, a few things. Um, one, I think it was someone just said that more money doesn't mean better education. That, I would disagree with that, that's false. I have the luxury to pull up on my tablet, there's study after study after study after study that shows an increase in funding, shows an increase in test scores. But just look all around, you don't have to go very far. The affluent districts perform better, the poorer districts perform worse. So, why is that? Well, the affluent districts can have better student-teacher ratios, they can have competitive teacher compensation, they can have early childhood intervention programs, they can have additional supports. Uh, these all cost money, and affluent districts have them, which is why they're outperforming us, because we don't have them. So, yeah, actually, more money, more spending does actually increase educational output. Secondly, the numbers, I said about the work session, uh, we've lost in the last 10 years 22% of our full-time employees, I had those numbers specifically. And I think Teresa brought up that even if we pass the four-mill, we'd still be cutting teachers. So, uh, this would still require the, hang on, I have it here. I asked in the executive, uh, 12 attrition and potentially six non-renewals. So even if we pass a tax increase, we're still going to lose potentially 18 teaching staff. Uh, I don't believe that that percentage, uh, is equal to the loss of students we're gonna have from one year to the next. Although, I am worried, as Mr. Brown brought up, that as more and more spotlight this board likes to bring upon itself, more and more people leave. And I've come to the conclusion that some of you actually want that. And it's pretty... And their education, they're going to get passionate, they're going to get angry, and they're gonna get sentimental. And so I appreciate everybody being here. The next thing I'd like to bring up is some of the costs. There's actually a lot, but I'll omit my time for the rest of the board, but, uh, you know, when the price of an antibiotic goes up for my child, I'm still gonna buy. When the price of healthy food goes up in the grocery store, I'm still gonna buy that healthy food. When medical expenses and gasoline goes up, I'm still gonna drive my child to the ER. The price of education has gone up, we have no control over that, I wish we did, but we don't. The rigor from the state requires more, these kids to do more sooner. I would like any one of us to try to write a TDA and get proficient levels on this board, but we have third, fourth, and fifth graders to do it. That costs money. Uh, we, as a district, were held to a metric of proficiency and growth that requires kids to see numerous interventionists and aides. I'm shocked that we are considering cutting intervention aids. We got some sad news earlier today that we're getting less money from our title funding and our federal funding than what we thought. So there's more of those interventionists now that are going to be stretched even thinner, even with the tax increase. Increase in student services for kids who have trauma, price of outside services, utilities, athletic equipment, paper, legal fees, textbooks, technologies, services, food. Course labor's gonna go up, not just for teachers, but for every staff included in the district. So when the prices of this goes up for my child, I'm willing to spend the money, just as I'm willing to spend the money to get the prescription drug or to take him to the ER. Uh, we should be looking at it that way, and that's all I'll have to say. Oh, and assistant coaches, I said last time, we gotta be careful about saying something loud enough and often enough, and believe it's true, it's not... Uh, I'm looking at the CBA right now, and our athletic coaches get a third of what was described. It is possible to get booster money, but Pencrest does not pay their athletic coaches that much, not even close. So, those are some of the facts, and some of my opinions mixed in once. Thank you all.
Ryan, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I finally have a comment. So someone is, um...
There you go.
So someone earlier called a couple of us out for not saying anything, but, uh, someone had told me before, if you have anything nice to say, don't say it. So a lot of the... Because I sit up here and I keep my mouth closed. Um, I'm gonna vote yes for the four-mill, because I have a son in the district. Um, he's two, but it matters to me, the education he gets, and that's why I'm sitting here. I know some of you, some of you, I went to school with, some of you taught me. That's why I'm sitting here, because I wanna see this district succeed, I don't wanna see it going in the way it's going. You know, I don't wanna pay more taxes. This affects probably 85% of my family, because they live in this district and they pay these taxes, which they have been doing for generations. Um, our kids deserve it, and I hope we can, you know, come to a compromise. I'm not comfortable, along with some of these other people, with a lot of the cuts we're making. So that will be addressed, you know, at some point, but that's why I'm voting yes, we need it for our future.
I have one more thing to touch on, is, uh, I wanna say to Haley and Lauren, you did an awesome job up here, young lady. You did a very, very... And the hardest thing is also you did another fabulous job. Thank you. I love to speak to people. So, yep, I'm just gonna touch on one more thing, and we talked, some people said that this doesn't affect the children. But we lose this Title I, and Cambridge is gonna be affected. A lot of students are gonna be affected by this loss. Uh, this is detrimental. The same people that say that are also gonna be complaining because test scores aren't doing what they want. There's a reason why there's a correlation between instructors and test scores. It's bad enough the class sizes are gonna be what they are, and that's unfortunate, but it's just the way it's gonna be right now. But cutting the mental health, I think, is very ignorant. I think it's injustice for this board to even suggest that. And to cut the Title I, I know we usually get federal funding, and we didn't, that's beyond our control, but the fact of the matter is, the job still has to be done. We have to, we have to keep those two. I, I'm just, I will fight for those two positions. It does affect our children. And what Ms. Lauren said, she's right. There's so many children that we never know about. It's sad, but they need us, and they need this board to act. And like I said, next year, we're gonna be going over the same battle. This isn't a one-time increase, guys. We let this go so far, we're in a hole. This is gonna be going on for the next five or six years. And this is a battle we gotta fight, so just be warned, no matter how this goes tonight, it doesn't get better. Rule call, please.
Ms. Spears?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Chaucer?
Yes.
Reverend Custard?
No.
Ms. Lugo?
Yes.
Mr. Staborski?
Yes.
Mr. Velasquez?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Six yeses, three no's.
Resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved resolution to authorize a 24-25 homestead and/or farmstead real estate tax reduction.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item G, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of 24-25 IU5 special education contracts of all students.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item H, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of 24-25 monthly health, dental, and vision rates using high mark underwriting.
So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item I, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the district's 24-25 insurance quotes as a path.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item J, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the 24-25 paper supply quote to WB Mason.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item K, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the attached service purchase contract for medical services rendered during the 24-25 school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item L, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of following cafeteria equipment with the attached quotes.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item N, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the attached SCCA pre-K counts leasing agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item N, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the attached Northwest Tri-County IU5 early intervention lease agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Personnel report. Item A, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the following resignations.
You wanna combine them?
Can we do a consent?
There's a couple on that we have to add in here.
Oh.
At the end. By the way, I was gonna pray on it.
That's fine. It's just been a long meeting.
I know. So, uh, we have item A resignation. Resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the following resignations.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item B, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the resignation of following coaches.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
Item C, coaches, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of following coaches.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save. Motion carried.
D, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval to appoint Chris Becker as treasurer of the board, July 1st, 2024 through June 3rd, 2025.
So move.
Second.
The motion in a second, any comments or questions?
Are you sure?
Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Close save.
Second.
Motion carried.
D, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval to appoint the following individual for Article 19 extraparticular tour positions.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye? Close save. Motion carried.
Item F, resolve Pencrest Board of School Directors' approval of the following standard school yearers.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Close, same.
G, resolve Pancras Board of School Directors' approved the following two individuals for summer 2024 technology internships.
Uh-huh.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
H, resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' approved to employ the following non-structural staff listed.
Uh-huh.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
Um, item I, resolve Pancras Board of School Directors' approved the therapeutic classroom behavior support child description.
Uh-huh.
Second. The motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
Item J, item 93, support hire. Resolve Panc, resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' approved the employment of Lindsay Hillbottle as the district's therapeutic classroom behavior supporter.
Uh-huh.
Second. The motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
Item K, appointment Maplewood High School principal. Resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' appoint Dana Mason as the principal at Maplewood High School. Salary and benefits in accordance with Act 93 agreement.
Uh-huh.
Second. The motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
Congratulations, Dana.
Thank you. Item L, uh, we will not be voting on the person, uh, the last person we interviewed turned down the position, so we do not have any candidate to be interviewed this time for, um, band director. Um, item M, resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' approved the following volunteers as listed.
Uh-huh.
Second. The motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
Items under new business, um, item A, in accordance with Act 44 of 2018, on June 11th, 2024, the district's safety and security coordinator officer presented to the school board and directors current safety and security practices, identified strategies to improve school safety and security during executive session. Um, item B is, uh, remainder of the RESR program. Uh, we have to, every six months, get our plan re-approved by the board, so that's just here listed for you. Resolve the Board of School Directors' approved six-month review of the cash RESR health and safety plan. No changes.
Second.
The motion in the second.
I'm sorry, I was...
Wake up.
It's bedtime.
We have a motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Close, same. Motion carried.
Final vote ahead.
Somebody else can say second.
Item C, appeal of the court case. Resolve the Board of School Directors' approved to appeal Pancras School Board versus Rogers at Crocker County Docket, number AD 2023-275 to the common law board.
Uh-huh.
Second. The motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Motion carried.
The Board met executive session on June 3rd and 11th, um, for personnel and legal. Finally, under announcements, um, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Ford.
Turn your microphone on, Ryan.
Ryan, is it on?
It's on. Is it on up there?
Is it saying mute on it?
It might have done. Is this on?
No.
Okay. Is it on?
Yep.
It's on. Okay, good. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start off with some, uh, really positive news. Last week, um, I wasn't here yet, but the graduation, um, took place at the last student day, and, uh, and I got, I asked for Ken to give me some statistics, and so here's some positives. Pancras graduation data, uh, reported, uh, by students. There were $2 million, $2,051,270 of scholarships given out in this community to three, to the three schools. There were 11 students joining the military, 114 students entering a two- or four-year school, 87 students entering the workforce, and seven are still deciding. For, for a small school, over $2 million in scholarships, great job. I rock. Move on and look at some of your activities in, in the playoffs, literally just ended yesterday. I'll start with the, um, uh, maybe a little lesser known. That's the Pancras trap team.
Yes.
Okay? Segertown trap team this year, 42 students on that team. They finished second in the conference. Emma Spencer was the top gun female in the conference. 26 students went to states. The varsity team placed ninth. The junior varsity team placed second. Addison Spencer was second-place high-gun female, and 10 students are going to Nationals in Michigan on July 11th through 14th. Job well done, Segertown. Cambridge Springs Trap Team had 22 students on the team. They finished first in their conference. Ian Anderson was the high-gun male in the conference. Gray Snow was the high-gun female in the conference. And Kendall Kraft was third-place female in the conference. 19 shooters went to states. The varsity team placed sixth, and 10 students are going to Nationals. Congratulations. Maplewood Trap Team had 30 students on that team. They finished second in conference. Dylan Dewey was the high-gun in the conference. 17 students went to states. The varsity team finished 16. Five students are going to Nationals. Overall, in this district, there were 94 students on the trap team. Over 600 students from across DA went to the state tournament and shot close to 10,000 shotgun shells without any injuries. All right? Um, I, I congratulate all the shooters, and I wish all the students going to Nationals the best of luck. Moving on to some other athletics, we had the following team advance to teams, advanced to the District 10 playoffs. Cambridge Springs volleyball team, uh, lost in the first round. The Maplewood baseball team lost in the first round, and the Cambridge team, uh, baseball team lost in the semifinal game. So congratulations to those three teams. The following team's played in the District 10 championship game. This is pretty, pretty impressive for, for Pancras School District. Cambridge Springs softball won the District 10, um, championship. Segertown high school softball team also won the District 10 championship. Maplewood softball team played in the championship and they lost, and I believe they lost to Cambridge Springs. Am I right on that? All right, sorry, I'm not stirring up any controversy. Um, we had the Segertown baseball team lost, but I'll get back to them here in the PIAA. Um, and the Segertown high school volleyball team also lost in the final. So congratulations to those teams. The teams that advanced to the Pennsylvania Interscholastic F Championships, Cambridge Springs softball lost in the first round. The Segertown volleyball team lost in the first round. Segertown softball team won in the first round to advance to the quarterfinals and lost in round two. And then the Segertown high school baseball team won their first two rounds to play in the state semifinals, where they lost a tough 5-7 decision. So congratulations to all those. I had to start with some, some positive. I am, uh, I'm gonna transition. I know it's late. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shorten these next five pages of notes I have. All right, so, um, we have just, and I've been, you know, I've been up here a lot, um, before I started, this is my first day, by the way. I'm fully aware that we've navigated through a very challenging budget season, and I want to extend all the appreciation to all members of the community for their patience, understanding, and support during this time. For the most part, I heard a lot of respectful interactions. There's a few, there's a few that we need to clean up, because we have to stay respectful, and we have to stay respectful at all times. And the more we do that, the more, better we're going to be. But overall, I saw a lot of respect, both from boards to the community. Passion, absolutely, be passionate, but I did see that. The process of crafting a school budget that meets the needs of students while remaining fiscally responsible is very complex and often fraught with very difficult decisions. As we've heard tonight, even though we passed this four mil that people were asking, we still have a very serious deficit budget that we are running this year. The problems are not going away, but the, but we're going to start. I, I, what, I wrote down a couple people who spoke tonight. Mr. Wilcox talked about planning, and I absolutely believe that that's the, the start of this. We have to begin with the end in mind, if you know, any kind of, you know, you begin with the end in mind. What it, what is it that we want as a community? What is it that our students need for their future? And we build that out, and we create those priorities, and then that becomes the first part of the budget. Because if we don't have that long-range plan, we're gonna be back here every year, back and forth. Sometimes we may, we may not pass a tax increase, sometimes we may, but it's not sustainable. What we're doing right now is not sustainable. There are many difficult decisions, so I am not going to, um, sit up here tonight and explain, and say that it's not. We've got a lot of difficult work ahead. I accepted this job because I wanted to tackle the challenge. Um, as, as I thought about it, I probably should've left that date, Mr. Johnson, of July 1st, it would've been a heck of a lot easier, all right? But that's not how I operate. It's not how I'm wired. You run into problems, you run into problems, and you face them head-on, and you figure a way out, and that's what we're gonna have to do. And it's gonna take more than one mind. It's gonna take a community, it's gonna take all of us working as a team and coming together, and we're gonna have to get creative. We're gonna have to look at those, and we are. I, I won't shy away from tough conversations, tough decisions. So I, but I do appreciate the board, um, very, very difficult, and I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, I'm gonna focus on a few things. I'm gonna focus on education. I was moved tonight to tears when I heard Ms. Lauren talk. And I don't cry very, I'm getting emotional now, because Ms. Lauren, is she still here or she leaves?
She left.
She left. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure we reach out to her, 'cause there's a superintendent sitting up here that overcame dyslexia, who was adopted, and I root for kids like that. That's why I'm in this seat, because of those obstacles. I will always advocate for children. That doesn't mean that I always say that we need to raise taxes or we need to do this. We got tough decisions. We still have more tough decisions to talk about, as you heard tonight. But that's why I'm here. I appreciate, uh, Mr., I think Mr. Taugh talked about his learning support. I was there, and, um, you know, now I'm a superintendent. I don't know, I don't know, that's good or bad, by the way. But I'm here, I'm gonna work really hard for this district. We're gonna, I'm gonna have transparency and communication. We're, we are gonna, we need to be fiscally responsible, and I'm gonna support the staff, because our staff's the backbone of, uh, and they're in the trenches every day. So, that's where I'm at. Now, I'm gonna turn my attentions to what's called an entry plan that we established in the interview process, and I'm going to be reaching out, I'm gonna have some focus groups in the community, I'm gonna talk to students in the fall, talk to teacher groups, and I'm gonna do that for the next six months. I'm gonna look at our operations, how can we improve? Where can we look for additional savings, maybe additional grants? Those are the type of things I wanna really take a look at in the district. I'll come back in six months, present that to the board in a community session, uh, see, you know, an initial thought, where we establish some priorities, hopefully in January, and then that starts our budget process, because we've gotta get into the budget process quicker than, than June, because we're losing out when we need to hire, because we're waiting. We need to be hiring and looking at things in March and April, 'cause we wanna get the set. That's my timeline, and that's, and that will help create the vision. I'm not coming in here with a preconceived idea of a vision. I'm coming in here to listen to this community and then bring some of my expertise and the things I bring to the table to, to create a vision for the future. And so, um, I thank, I thank you for, I, I appreciate, you know, someone said, "You're gonna have a lot of speakers tonight." And I said, you know, in some ways, it shows you the heart of the community, shows you